We are back on the record. Uh, from Executive Session, I need a motion to adjourn from Executive Session. Moved and seconded, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Simmons.
Aye.
Commissioner Holman.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Commissioner Better.
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrosse.
Aye.
Next on our agenda for tonight is a proclamation, uh, for celebrating Catholic School Week. And, who's coming for us? Whoever wants to come for us. Thank you. Ray Carey. You want to stand by the mic?
It's my privilege to read this proclamation. Uh, this is in reference to, uh, to Catholic School Week. Uh, so I will read this and, and we'll offer our, uh, combination for, for this activity. So this is proclamation, whereas each year the Archdiocese of Cincinnati designates one week during the, uh, school year to highlight Catholic schools. And in 2005, the week designated would be January 26th through February 1st. Whereas since 1853, Pickwatt's had a Catholic school. And today, Pickwa Catholic School is an example that a religion-based, religious-based school can withstand the test of time and change. Whereas, the Archdiocese of Cincinnati network of Catholic schools has grown into one of the top 10 largest systems of Catholic schools in the United States. And whereas, a Catholic school education is highly valued and has played a significant role in the lives of many families. And whereas, the presence of a Catholic school in our community has proven to be, uh, an additional amenity, uh, and incentive to the economic development of the city. And whereas, the Pickwa Catholic School is fully credited by the Ohio Catholic Accreditation Association, serving students in preschool through eighth grade that consistently achieve above average in national testing. And whereas, the school has opened enrollment and welcome students from other communities and other religions in the intimate environment of the Pickwa Catholic School that it affords. And each child personally attention and promotes individual success, self-esteem and growth. And whereas, the legacy of Pickwa Catholic School will live on for many years, thanks to the dedicated administrators, teachers, students, as well as the very supportive community. Now, therefore, uh, I am not the mayor, but I will say the mayor of Pickwa, who is Chris Lee, uh, do hereby proclaim January 26th through February 1st of 2025 as celebrating Catholic School Week in the city of Pickwa. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You probably want to know who is here.
Yeah.
This is Karen Michaela Jeski with the Advancement Committee for Pickwa Catholic School. Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Nice to see you.
Thank you for everything.
Yes, thank you very much, everybody, for making us a Catholic school.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You can have your seat. Thanks. Next on our agenda is a presentation from the Park Board.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Who do you have with you?
Um, this is Cindy Pearson and Mary Garrett.
We know her. We know her, too.
On the Park Board with me. And, um, Natalie Young, current Chair of the Park Board. Um, we are required to submit an annual report to the Commission, and so that is what we are here to do. Um, you each have a copy of it in your packet, I would assume. Um, and hopefully have had the chance to review it, and if you have any questions, we can do that here in just a minute. Um, I'll just kind of go over a few of the highlights from the report for anybody that doesn't have a copy of it. Um, really, we just summarized, um, a summary of the topics that we considered and discussed throughout the entire year. Uh, we included a list of the presentations that were made. Uh, some of those we requested for people to come in, others, um, were third parties that reached out to us to come and present. Um, there is a list of the recommendations that were implemented in the current year. And then, um, a summary of the Board's top voting results for the recommendations that we have for each of the parks that we observed. And so, um, that was really the main thing that we did all year long, so I'll kind of give through that process with you. Um, really, we just picked three or four parks at each meeting and would go observe those parks and accumulate our observations and suggestions. Um, those are included in the back of your packet. Those include the good and the bad, so to speak. Um, we accumulated everything that was like an action item, and, um, those were displayed at our last Park Board meeting, and we all went up and voted on our top three or so parks. We each got three votes per park, and then we accumulated, um, those results for you in this report. So you'll see for each park listed, you know, there's two, three, four, depending on voting results. So, um, I'm not going to sit here and go through every line item with you, so what would you like to know?
You don't need to.
Any questions?
Do you feel the items that you guys suggest, um, be done, is getting done, or any attention to?
Um, I think some of the things that we have discussed are going to be implemented in this coming year. Um...
From the previous year to, to this year, were any of the items that you guys recommended?
We'll see this year. I think that the plan is to redo the tennis court at Pitsenbarger. I think that's in this year. Yes. And, um, a lot of the recommendations that we kind of focus on are smaller scale, like in terms of French Park, for example. Um, you know, a lot of people go there for lunch. If you drive by around lunchtime, you'll see a lot of cars parked there while people are sitting in their cars eating, when they could have a few more benches or picnic tables or maybe a covered shelter and have a nice place to eat outside.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I mean, if you want me to go through some of...
No, no. I just... You answered my question.
I think we're kind of getting there.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Are these listed, um, where you list the parks and the needs, are they listed in any particular order?
Nope.
Okay.
They're not.
Any other questions from Commissioners?
How are you doing with attendance? Are you having quorums routinely for the...
Um, we are. Um, I'm not sure if, is there a minimum number? Do you know of people that we have to have? Um, I, I'm not sure if all of the members that are, their terms are expiring, I'm not sure that they're going to reapply, so we might not have...
Do they get a resignation? You saw that.
Yes, I know we have one resignation, and I think, I think there's three that are up in March, and I'm not sure if any of them will be...
I guess we'll be soliciting for some more, but there's one that I know now that people can apply for if they want to...
There, yeah, there's, I think technically two...
Two?
Two vacancies at the moment, and then we'll have a few more.
You want to join this happy band?
Yeah.
Uh, please apply.
Yeah, we're planning to continue our park observations this year, kind of doing the same thing. We didn't, you know, observe like linear park, and a few of them got missed just because of the amount of time in between meetings and making determinations of what we wanted to, to observe, so we're...
You should go home and observe the parks. You want to talk about that?
Yeah, last year, um, midsummer, I heard some people talking some smack about the parks, but I didn't, I wasn't sure if it was true or not. So actually, I went out and did a tour of all, I believe, 16 parks that are listed on the webs, on the city website, um, including Linear Park, which I like often. Um, and I was generally, uh, pleased with, with how they all look. There's a couple of specific parks that have some specific target issues, but generally as a, as a portfolio of parks, they all look very, very nice. Um, and I think that goes to having an active park board that's been keeping track of that over the years. Um, they can always, always get better, but generally, I think of the park system as looking very great, which I think, again, testament to you guys.
I think, um, the Parks Department has been doing a really good job on maintenance. I think that's where they've been focusing most of their time and effort, so...
And please keep on them if you feel they're slipping on.
Yeah, they're, I think that they're doing a great job. The sort of focusing on is more user-friendly type things, so those are the bigger things that we would like to kind of see. We've been discussing, um, like a pollinator project is where a location, a good location would be for that in terms of which park, how much acreage. Um, we would really like to see a splash pad. Um, I think the Parks Board is leaning towards Pitsenbarger as a good location for that, but that's all community input and future discussions.
The other nice thing is you have several groups that are supportive of, of parks activities, uh, and, and, and are actively trying to give assistance to either building or reconditioning or, uh, changing some things that need to be done in the parks. That's a good place to be.
Yes, we've had, um, very nice discussions with, uh, the Hands Pavilion Group that's trying to restore the pavilion. Um, friends of Pickwa Parks have reached out, um, attended one of our meetings, so that we are hoping, kind of going into the next few years, we can kind of all be working towards the same goal, so...
That's great. Well, I appreciate you ladies coming up and discussing and updating us, and if there's anything we can do, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is a motion to approve the business agenda, the rules of conduct for City Commission. So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the approval of the consent agenda.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that another one? Motion carries. Next is new business. Uh, we'll start with Resolution Number R-8-25.
A resolution accepting annexation of 329.824 acres of land from Washington Township to the city of Pickwa.
Good evening Commissioners. Uh, this is the final step in the annexation approval process concerning the subject 329 acres. Uh, this particular tract consists of nine parcels controlled by five separate property owners. Uh, of note is that the subject area is identified in the City of Pickwa comprehensive plan as a strategic growth area opportunity for industrial end-use types. In addition, uh, the annexation area, along with the previous land, annexed land to the east and to the south, is well-suited for development as a Class A industrial park and is able to be served by city utilities. Uh, in summarizing, authorization of this item will accept the land into the City of Pickwa Corporation limits, enable, uh, the opportunity for the development potential of the land to be fully realized, and more importantly, perhaps, uh, place the land in a position to facilitate a significant expansion of the local economic base in the community. Uh, attending this evening representing the annexation request is Mr. Brian Stone, uh, who is here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the Commission? Well, it looks like I got one. Nicholas Mark?
Nicholas Mark, 1433 Covington Avenue. When you speak to, Mr. Schmeesing, when you speak to, uh, future development in Pickwa, um, can you give me specifics on what that would look like?
Well, I would tell you, uh, we generally are looking at the highest and best use opportunities for whatever parcel or tract of land it is we might be discussing. Um, there are target industries, uh, at Jobs Ohio level that we also recognize and pay attention to, uh, because those are typically the ones that are best suited for the, uh, character of our workforce and, and what happens in our region, uh, in terms of synergy between, uh, other industries, uh, that exist here. Uh, this area, when I say Class A industrial park, to me represents an opportunity for a focus on advanced manufacturing and technology-oriented businesses that, um, generally will bring with it higher-paying jobs, uh, given the acreage that we're talking about, uh, a significant number of jobs potentially. Uh, does that give you...
Well, do, do we have anybody in mind? Does anybody have any interest in a specific business? Have any interest in that, in coming to that plot?
We, we feel, uh, we respond to leads all the time.
Yes.
Uh, so, the nature of our business is to, to put the feelers out there and see what industries and site selectors might be looking for a new home. Uh, so we're constantly searching for those opportunities. Uh, the representative here to speak on behalf of the annexation represents the developer side of the table.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the long and short of it is their goal here is to position this land for the development opportunities that it represents. Uh, when you look at the proximity to Exit 78 on I-75, uh, you look at the 750,000 people in a 45-minute drive area within our workforce, um, and all the other characteristics and attributes that matter to site selectors and potential end-users, this property is very attractive for development purposes with those kind of end uses.
Okay. Uh, the resolution, this is for accepting the annexation of, uh, 329.824 acres of land from Washington Township to the city of Pickwa. Is that going to be, is that going to require, um, it sounds like it's going to require a significant amount of, um, clearing of the land? Am I correct in saying that?
Without, uh, that's running the risk of speaking on behalf of the developer, I can tell you it is generally flat farmland. Uh, there is some treat area. Anytime there's new development, there's due diligence is performed, uh, any environmental concerns are identified and satisfied, cultural resource surveys are conducted. Um, if there's treat areas and there's, uh, endangered species, those things have to be resolved. Drainage characteristics that need to be addressed are all things that, you know, it's incumbent upon the development interest to submit plans for how those things are being satisfied.
Okay. Um, there was a gentleman here at the Planning Commission, at the last Planning Commission. He had some grievances, um, uh, regarding this agenda proposal and his property. And I was just going to check and see if anybody can update me as to whether, um, somebody went out there and checked his property, um, took down his grievances and trying to remediate some type of, you know, course with him. I know this goes right along with the zoning. Um, and he was concerned about that as well.
That was at the Planning Commission, so I don't know anything about that.
So this, the discussion on this particular property was several months back. I'm, I'm thinking maybe you're referring to the more recent item that was, um, concerning the, um, substation proposal out by the water treatment plant.
Yeah, is this not for subst, oh, this is for zoning?
This is not that property.
For zoning, right?
This is the annexation of 329 acres south of town, um, near Washington Road, unrelated to the discussion of the water treatment plant.
So, can you give me a street where that would be? A map, a street? Give me something in my head.
Corner of Washington and Farrington Road.
Okay, Washington and Farrington, okay.
I believe there's maps in the packet.
Yep. Available on... Your time's up, Mr. Mark. Thank you.
Yes.
Having no other public comment on this, I would...
Mayor, I would move that we adopt Resolution R-825.
Second that.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Next on the agenda is Resolution Number R-9- or 9-15.
A resolution authorizing a zoning map amendment to the city of Pickwa zoning map for parcels numbered M-40-04-1750 through M-40-01-2000 to heavy industry.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Uh, this is a continuation of the previous resolution. Uh, this Resolution R-925 designates the product, the land that was just annexed into the city. Uh, it would designate that as IH, heavy industrial. Uh, this did get a recommendation of five to zero in our Planning Commission. Uh, I would like to note, though, that IH designation, as Mr. Schmeesing noted previously, uh, allows for the highest and best use of the land. Uh, and there was some discussion at the Planning Commission about what those uses would be. Um, currently, asking for that designation is similar to the other designations in the area, uh, but we want to be clear that by designating it IH, it does allow for, uh, a number of uses, but those high-impact uses, which were noted at the Planning Commission, uh, would require a special use, so they would have to come back for the Planning Commission and City Commission requesting explicitly those uses. Uh, so again, there are permitted uses that are noted, that are low-impact or medium-impact or some other uses that are explicitly noted in our code that are permitted, uh, but a number of the comments that were made at the Planning Commission noted, uh, uses that were explicitly special uses. Uh, so again, I just want to make it clear that if, uh, which again, nothing is being proposed, but if those were to be proposed, uh, they would have to come back for the Planning Commission, uh, which would have a public input portion. Uh, then there would be a recommendation made to the City Commission, which would also, again, have a public, uh, comment portion prior to any, uh, use being approved in any of those categories. With that, uh, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Uh, Mr. Higginman, I believe I understood correctly the, uh, to pass a special use permit, uh, whereas previously it only required a vote of the Planning Commission. It was recently changed that it requires a vote of the Planning Commission and this Commission. Is that correct?
Amazingly enough, it depends on your definition of recent, but our code was updated in 2023, and, uh, yes, that is, uh, with that code changed, it was updated. That is the process now, which will require both Planning Commission and City Commission approval of those special uses.
So, to restate for the record, it is impossible for us to pass, for, it is impossible for a special use permit to be passed without going through this body. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Higginman, can you give me an example of something that would require a special use permit?
Sure. I actually brought it here. So, uh, a high-impact industrial use that would require a special use would be a fertilizer manufacturer, a recycle processor, a livestock feeding yard, a forging plants, and drop hammers, whatever that is, uh, coke ovens, uh, concrete batch plant, crematorium, I could go on. Uh, they're explicitly noted as very high intense uses. All of those would require special uses. Uh, just to give you an idea of a low-impact industrial, uh, that would not require it would be a leatherwork, a jewelry, uh, manufacturer, pottery, woodworking, um, again, and moderate has different uses as well.
Would a minor or rock quarry require special permit?
It would.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from...
Just to make sure that I got this right, so in case someone comes up and says, oh, why are you doing it with heavy industrial when you annex a property into the city? You have to zone it, so you have to give it some designation.
Correct.
Right?
Okay.
So I didn't want anybody to come up and say, well, why not just leave it blank? Because you can't do that. You can't do that.
All right. That is it for Commissioners' comments. Kim Heisler for public comment?
Hello, Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. Um, thank you for those explanations on that. Um, and I think I mentioned it before, but heavy industrial, and, and I know we're trying to bring industry in and we need to have that. As Commissioners, is it possible or could you consider actually writing something, uh, some kind of ordinance that, that leaves certain, uh, businesses out of the equation so that we don't have... Basically, basically, we have a, a 20-year contract still going on with what happened at the old water plant. That's been shut down, but how do we know on any of these other properties coming in that's heavy industrial? It just can't start back up again under maybe a different name. And I know, as Kyle said, it has to get approved through them, and then it has to come through you guys, but once it gets through them, it's really hard, uh, to stop something like that. So I guess what I'm asking you guys to do is possibly look at trying to prevent something like, uh, the battery situation, uh, before it starts up again. You know, so we stop it before it starts type of thing, if at all possible. And then, um, the second thing is, once this stuff gets, um, zoned as heavy industrial, what then is the process if like somebody comes in and you guys approve and it's going to be light industrial or, or maybe retail or something? Is that, is that still a possibility or open? Or are you guys just looking for the most bang for the buck so that the city can make more money? And if you guys could answer, that'd be great. Thank you for some questions.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly can't speak for what the developer, I mean, the developer obviously is, is looking to have uses that are compliant with what they are trying to achieve in the city of Pickwa. Um, there, potentially in the future, if there was a retail desire, obviously, that could happen, but it's very unlikely that a retail use would be the, the highest and best use for that property, primarily just because of its location. You know, your retail uses are on main roadways or closer to the highway or something like that. So as part of the overall development, uh, you know, properties, potentially, there can be retail, but, um, again, there is always a right for a property owner to request the zoning designation change. So if the developer in the future made a determination that the use, that somebody was trying to use on their property was not possible, they would have a right to then change it. Uh, but again, as, uh, as Chris noted previously, um, the highest and best use is likely some sort of high-tech, um, manufacturing type of thing. This use would allow that and allow the city to be, uh, available for those type of uses.
I would, uh, does anybody from the city staff know, eh, what the zoning designation for the firefighter train facility is? Does that have the industry?
I don't know that off the top of my head. The water plant is zoned IH. I don't know what the old, what that facility is zoned. I would imagine it's zoned IH, but I, I don't know that.
Okay. Um, and then I'll just also add that, uh, while there's some intention of using this as a way of saying that city's trying to make money off of this, as though it's some sort of bad thing to, to make money, um, I would note that the, the city is not purchasing this land or, or selling this land, we're extending our jurisdiction over top of it, correct?
Correct. The city has no, no input on...
The, the only, the only mechanism by which the city could generate cash revenue off of that would be, uh, by property taxes and income taxes. So if we are, uh, making as much money as possible off of that, the only way to do that is by, um, if a developer were to come in and increase substantially the value of that land and be paying employees a substantial income, that can then be taxed. So that's the only mechanism by which we can, uh, you know, make as much money as possible off of that land. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Jeff Grimes.
Jeff Grimes, 1512 Martin Drive. So, uh, we're going to annex 300 and some acres into town. Um, how much is this going to cost us for, to run the services and stuff out there? Does anybody have any idea on that?
We don't have a number for what, uh, specific utilities, because we don't know what those specific utilities would be at this time. We are, um, as, I know Commissioners are aware, and if you're not aware, I mean, we are currently engineering, um, those kind of things. So our hope is to know the exact numbers as we continue to develop the engineering for the water, the sewer, and the storm that will be out. the sewer, and the storm that will be out there.
So no idea what it's going to cost us?
No, we, we certainly have an estimate, but I don't want to throw a number out there and then it's an estimate. So we certainly, as things finalize and as decisions are made for maybe an end user, whenever that comes forward, obviously, the city will make sure that we can provide the services that are necessary for whatever user determines there. It's a very, a varying use. If you have a certain user, they may ask for something. If you have a different user, they certainly would ask for something else. So we're going to make sure that that's engineered appropriately and as cost-effectively as we can to meet the need of whatever users are there.
I'm really scared of the environmental impact. This is almost all farmland. And all the water runoff will be going to the river once again. I know it's not that close to the river, but it's not that far. So I'm concerned about the environmental impact to the Miami River once again. And so why, if I'm not mistaken, I H? And this is going to be for the manufacturing or storage of dangerous, noxious, or offensive materials. Smoke, odor, noise, glare, fumes, gas, vibration, fire, or explosion, risk of emissions of particulate matter, radiation, or other disruptive factors. Do we, do we really, do we really need to do the I H if it's going to be high-tech? What, what if it's high-tech? What, why would there be dangerous or noxious or offensive materials and all this other stuff? And I'm just concerned about what's going on in our town once again. And once the door is opened, then it's impossible to get this door shut. We're finding that out already. So do we want more emissions of particulate matter? Do we want radiation? Do we want smoke or noise? Would you guys want that built by your house?
The part is noise, that's going to be further out of town. And the people who are on those properties, they would sell. So there would, there might be homes to the north, but.
But where's all this stuff going to go? The smoke, the odor, noise, okay. We can get away with noise, glare.
I'd just like to note again that the language that was noted there is considered the high-impact, which would be a special use. And again, would require planning commission and separate, separate planning commission and separate city commission approval for any use that does the language that was noted right there, which is specifically the high-impact industrial uses. And again, those are not permitted by, by right. Those are special uses that would require a separate approval. I just want to make sure that's.
Then why zone it like this? Why don't you make it light industrial?
Well, as noted again, there are permitted uses under that, which again, I went through a number for the commission, which do not require a special use. But the notes, or the, the language that you noted specifically is the high-intensity version, which requires a special use. It's a different category. So if you look at that zoning code, I'm not certain if you have that in front of you, but if you look at the mid or the low-impact, those uses are permitted by right in the I H.
I'm just probably against the I H, but like I said, I'm really concerned about the environmental impacts that this will have, that we've had it already, that it was supposed to go in front of the commission, and that didn't turn out too well for us. Thank you.
Just point out that existing farmland, Ohio, has one of the largest, most bountiful water aquifers in the world and also has poisoned with the highest concentration of microsates in the country because of farming. So farming is not this like eco-friendly, green business that it was purported to be. Typically, converting it over to any kind of industrial is going to entail a lot more regulation about what goes into the ground. As for things that would cause excessive volume, noise pollution, or air pollution, those are all covered under the special use. And we're required to come back before this body and put the planning commission before being put in place.
Nicholas Mark?
Nicholas Mark, fourteen thirty-three Covington Avenue. What resolution am I speaking to right now?
Ten.
What is it? R ten?
Nine.
No, yeah.
Oh, it's nine, sorry.
Nine?
Yeah.
It says right up there on the screens.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, nine. Let's read it. Subdivision. Okay, and these are all parcels currently either purchased by Burns or soon to be purchased by Burns. Is that correct?
No.
No, not correct.
None of these parcels are, are being owned. I'm, I'm assuming you mean Brunns.
Brunns, yeah.
None of the, the properties are being purchased by Brunns.
None of them. I thought he had interest out there in that area, like.
Is it appropriate for, Kyle, is it appropriate for the city to be commenting on the private transactions for private individuals?
Again, that's not what's being requested.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
The zoning is being requested this evening of that missed property.
Yeah, the zoning, I understand, Mr. Burns, right? Was it Mr. Burns, Brunns?
Brunster Brunns, yep.
Yeah, he has the Sheets complex, right? Okay.
That's correct.
The Sheets Corporate Seventy-Five Complex. And then on the other side of that.
I believe you're probably mistaking this resolution for a resolution that is later in the evening.
No.
That is a forward for, there is a, a zoning designation for a thirty-acre piece of land that's coming up. I believe it's resolution fourteen this evening? That's probably the one thing you're intending to talk about.
Still in that general vicinity where Farrington is and twenty-five A.
Correct.
This resolution right now is just, that's a lot of parcels. So what, can you give me an idea of where that would be?
Exactly where the three hundred and twenty-nine point eight-two-four acres that were annexed at the last resolution? That, those nine properties are now, this zoning designation would fall upon those nine properties. So it's at the corner of Farrington and Washington Road, roughly.
Roughly, okay. And you can't speak to any specific businesses? I know you gave me a lot of illusion there.
There is a zoning designation request this evening. That's what we're hearing.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no other public comments on this topic?
I would just point out, Mayor, that I would personally find it abhorrent for the government to be interfering or snooping on private business transactions. I would say that's not a subject of this particular resolution.
Don't.
That is not something that the government has control over and not something that you want the government to have control over.
Agreed. I'll take a motion.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution R dash nine dash two five.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R dash ten dash twenty-five.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for the purchase of asphalt for Public Works in twenty twenty-five.
Yes, the city purchasing analysis bid out asphalt purchases for Public Works for twenty twenty-five and received the attached bid tab back on eleven nineteen twenty-four. The lowest bidder this year again was Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated. The price for asphalt for twenty twenty-five increased by two dollars per ton compared to the twenty twenty-four prices. The cost for four oh two base asphalt will be seventy-eight dollars a ton and the cost for four oh four asphalt will be eighty dollars per ton. We budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to purchase asphalt for twenty twenty-five. We will be using these funds to update sixty-five alley segments indicated on the attached maps, repair streets as needed from the winter weather and surface of gravel areas at the Public Works complex where the old storage building inside shop used to be and preparing the area for a new storage building to be built on the north side of the property later this year. These funds were approved in the twenty twenty-five budget.
Will some of this asphalt be used to fill in potholes?
Yes.
All right, as the quintessential function of government, which is to fill in potholes, I wholeheartedly approve this.
Is this, is this proposed expenditure included in your budget for, for twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the commission? Only question was from Nicholas Mark. He waves.
Mayor, I would move that we adopt resolution R dash ten dash two five.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R dash eleven dash twenty-five.
A resolution allowing the city manager to enter into a contract with Rumkey for sanitation services for the city of Pickwa.
Yes, the city purchasing analysis requested bids for sanitation services for the city of Pickwa. Requesting a five-year contract proposal for the option, with the option to extend a contract for an additional five years. We received one response from Rumkey Waste and Recycling proposing a five-year contract for sanitation services for the city of Pickwa with a renew, with an option to renew for an additional five years. In July of twenty-four, that is when we first informed the commission of future cost increases that would need to, that we would need to continue operations and the challenges we're having with the sanitation department. In August of twenty-four, we prepared a white paper and had a first discussion with the commissioners. In September of twenty-four, we had an executive session with city commissioners regarding this. In September of twenty-four, the HR director sent a notice to bargain with the ASPY Union and started meeting with employees, discussing potential options in the future for the department. In October and November of twenty-four, the HR director negotiated with the ASPY Union, allowing the city to place current full-time employees in different positions in various departments should the commission decide to move forward with contracting to Rumkey Waste and Recycling to provide services to the city of Pickwa residents. On November nineteenth of twenty twenty-four, we had a public work session regarding this. And on December tenth of twenty-four, we had a presentation to the city commission at the commission meeting. I had a representative from the, from the utility board set to be here at the last meeting. Unfortunately, they were, are not able to make the meeting to discuss the summary that I provided to you on recommendations moving forward with this Rumkey contract for sanitation services for the city of Pickwa. The city manager is going to speak on behalf of that.
Good evening, commission. I was just going to read some of the highlights from the summary that was provided by the utility board. What they say is based on a review of a proposal by Rumkey, Rumkey of Ohio, dated November twelve, for taking over city services, sanitation services. The committee voted unanimously to recommend proceeding with negotiating a final contract with Rumkey that materially conforms to the above referenced proposal. Key factors were Rumkey fees over a five-year horizon could be stabilized, whereas with the city, that was not known. Rumkey maintains service quality and efficiency by providing employees with a full training program, including a C D L program. In addition to scale their business, provides employees the opportunity to grow with the company over time. These cannot be offered by the city. The city services, the city service capacity offered by Rumkey in the event of a disaster cannot be offered by the city. Rumkey's skill allows them to shift resources in the event of a disaster in the way the city cannot do. Further, the proposal provides that Rumkey will maintain current routes and pickup schedule in order to minimize disruptions or inconveniences. They will maintain the current bulk pickup service. They will maintain billing through the city utility business office. Rumkey will continue to provide fall protection service, alley pickup to senior citizens and disabled citizens. Rumkey will provide one-time-per-week curbside trash and curbside recycling. And Rumkey will provide three large and/or bulky items collection on a day, a day subject to reasonable restrictions. Rumkey will provide customer service lines for pickup issues and they will also provide a regular service level support to the city manager that we share with the commission. The committee advised the city should follow, that the city, following the need, should be carefully managed, ensuring the city is not responsible for damage caused by Rumkey. The city must carefully consider when the change of Rumkey will happen, how effectively we communicate these changes, how the residents' request bulk pickup will be done, and how apartment building be handled for both regular and bulk pickup and cleanouts. And finally, the committee recommended the following with regard to the current sanitation fund balance. One was to establish a reserve fund for disaster management. The second was for short-term financial assistance to residents. Third is a reasonable fund balance to cover this, to cover city-provided administrative services during the transition period and fourth to develop a plan, subject to, for future review, to smooth out fees and increase, fee increases over time using the excess fund balance.
We also have representatives from Rumkey Waste and Recycling Management here to speak on behalf of their services.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Dusty Yngst. I am the municipal and public sector representative with Rumkey out of our Greenville office. Been with Rumkey for about five and a half years, currently managing right around forty, forty-plus municipal contracts through our Greenville office. With me is Barney Rumkey. He is the route manager. He will be responsible for the day-to-day operations within the city. Barney's family is obviously tied to the Rumkey waste industry. Rumkey's a family-owned and operated company for over ninety years. We're currently being led by our fourth generation of the Rumkey family. We look forward to the partnership with the city and to assist with the city's mission to keep their streets clean and green while providing residents with the highest level of service. Rumkey adopted a mission statement that we strive to achieve every day. Our mission is to deliver exceptional waste and recycling solutions to our customers and our communities through a commitment to safety, service, the environment, and the growth of our company and our people. We have a team of highly qualified individuals right here in our Greenville office that will work directly with the city and the city team. Barney and myself will be the direct points of contact for the city team out of our Greenville office. Also, within our Greenville office is our team of our operations team managers and supervisors and our full, full-time staff within our safety service department as well. Customer service is a top priority for our team. The constant direct communication with the city will allow us and the city to continue to provide the residents with a high level of service. Obviously, we have requirements that we are set to meet within this contract. And that's what Barney and I's job is every day, to make sure that those continue to be met and work directly with the city to make sure that's done. If awarded the contract and the opportunity to service the city and the residents, Rumkey will continue to work with the city team members over the next couple of months to ensure a seamless transition of services to the residents and the city. We have an implementation plan that was put into our bid packet. Obviously, some of those have been tweaked a little bit and moved back due to the timing. But we will ensure that we meet quickly with the team and start putting that plan together to start gathering the information and get information to the city to hear quickly then be able to get to all the residents, to give everybody ample time to get services switched over into systems and make sure residents know what's going on as well. We thank you and appreciate the careful consideration. We thank you and appreciate the careful consideration that the city and the commissioners have put into this, and we look forward to building a long, strong partnership with the city of Pickwa. Be sure, Barney and I, be sure to answer any questions that the commissioners may have for us in regards to this.
If we were to move forward, what would be your plan for swapping out the existing bins with new ones, or would you even do that?
Per the RFP that was out, there's a two-year period in there. So, there's two options we have within that two years, whether we swap them out with Rumkey cans, or if we go with a rebranding model rather than wasting all of those cans that are, you know, that are out there and don't need to be recycled or landfillled, because that's typically what happens on a cart swap-out. However, our cart manufacturer that we use now does have the ability to recycle those cans, they'll melt them down and then reuse them for new molds. So, we'll work with this, with the team on how we want to do that, but it all will be completed by the end of 2027.
But you guys would take on the burden of collecting this?
We would.
Because, yeah, my, I have some friends in Pittsburgh and they apparently just went through, transitioned to new trash collection, and everybody in the city had to figure out what to do with their old bin.
No, 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 we will take, we will take care of that. We'd have to work with Brian and get some room to stage some trailers, you know, and we'll, we'll pick them up. What we would do is we would follow the trucks on the routes.
Okay.
And as they empty, then we'll take them and drop the new ones and so. But either way, that plan will be implemented with the city and be completed by the end of 2027.
And then, if we were to move forward with the recycling piece, you guys offer recycling?
Yes, that's part of it, one time a week.
When you recycle it, does it actually go to recycling, or does it just go to the landfill sometimes?
It absolutely goes to recycling. So, even from here currently, the city currently takes it, take it to the transfer station, right Brian?
Correct.
So, Brian, they currently take it to the transfer station, which then gets transferred to the Rumkey Recycling Center.
Okay.
From Micah County. Now, for us, we'll probably take it back to our facility in Greenville, which then will end up at the same recycling center in Cincinnati. Separate trucks, separate, separated at the transfer stations, and then it ends up in Cincinnati at the recycling, at our recycling center.
Would recycling be every week, or would that be on a different schedule?
It is every week for the, for this contract, yes. Same day as their trash pickups. The routing's not changing currently at least, you know, we're gonna, we've got the route sheets, we'll be meeting with Brian, but everything for, everything to start is going to stay the same. Now, obviously, as we go along, we may try to make some recommendations as far as for efficiency or safety purposes, but to start, and at least for the first 90 days, because I think it's a 90 or 60-day notice about that, everything will be exactly the same as what it is set up now.
Do you know, do you have any familiarity with our style of truck versus your style of truck? Is there any significant difference in the footprint that might not fit in certain areas that ours do?
Automated and rear loads.
Right, automated?
Yep. We, we may toss around an idea down the road of using a different truck, but it won't affect anything that the residents are doing. It'd just be more efficient for our guys. But to start, the plan is automated side loaders that are being used by the city now and rear load trucks that are also being by, used by the city now. Same types of trucks running on the same routes that they currently have mapped out.
And then, can you tell me a little bit more about how bulk collection would work based off of what the RFP was?
Yes, bulk collection will be, each resident will be allowed up to three bulk items every week on their, on their collection day.
How big are we talking?
What's that?
How big are we talking?
As long as, I mean couches, you name it. There are some restrictions, and this information will be shared with the residents in a packet of information that they'll, they'll have ahead of time. There are some restrictions when you're talking about like tree lamps and woods and stuff like that. But what we ask for is a 24-hour notice. They'll just, they'll call, they can call the 1-800 number at Rumkey Customer Service, and they're just gonna tell them, I'm, I'm gonna put two couches out. Obviously, couches have to be wrapped, or furniture's gotta be wrapped. A lot of the same policies and procedures they're probably used to now as far as setting it on the curb. But I don't know that we'll really stress the 20. I mean, the truck's gonna be driving the route every day. The 24-hour notice is something we put in there, but our guys, they're driving the same route as the trash and recycling truck that day, and they're picking up bulk, so if they see a dresser out, they're gonna pick the dresser up kind of thing. So, but that is every week up to three items.
And then, organic waste like lawn clippings and leaves and leaf piles, you guys are gonna like suck those up or?
We don't, we do not provide that service as far as like leaf pickup goes. But like yard waste can be in bags, it's all getting mixed with trash because there's no licensed compost facility that we have access to at least right now. So, it's all being mixed with the trash and taken to the transfer station.
But again, do those, do those bags like go in just like with your regular trash?
They can, or they can be set beside your can.
Right now, I use those, they're real tall paper bags, they sell them pretty much every?
Yes, yeah.
I call them GGE bags, crass goes everywhere because you can't get it all in the bag. But yeah, I mean, those are very handy for setting out.
We can just set those and pick them up, we'll pick them up with the bulk. And the yard waste separately.
Oh, I got it.
Oh, you got it. Appreciate it though.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Any other questions from commissioners to staff?
I have a few for staff. Brian, how many employees, if we decide to move forward, would be affected by this?
Five full-time employees would be factored, affected, and they will all be offered full-time jobs with, to continue with the city of Pickwa.
Did the, those five employees, did their union weigh in on this?
Yes.
And I'm assuming the union was in favor?
Correct.
The positions that these five employees would be offered within the city, would their pay or benefits be decreased?
No, their pay and benefits will be exactly the same.
In the presentation that you gave us going on a month or so ago, have any of the numbers changed? By numbers, I mean this particular slide?
No.
So then, those have not changed. Based off of my, my math skills here, which we're stretching a little bit. In the first year, the, it's actually for 2025, the rates that we have set, it's a whopping $3.12 cheaper to stay with the city of Pickwa. When we get into 2026, it is $27.60 cheaper to go to Rumkey. In 2027, it is $64.44 cheaper to go to Rumkey. In 2028, it is $109.56 cheaper to go with Rumkey. In 2029, it is $160.80 cheaper to go to Rumkey. In 2030, it is $168.90 cheaper. And when I give these figures and I say cheaper, it is not cheaper for the city of Pickwa, it is cheaper for the residents of the city of Pickwa. This cost is put on top of your utility bill. The number one complaint that I have gotten in my year here as a commissioner is the cost of our utility bills. To me, this is not a question of whether or not I would like to keep the refuse department in-house or in the city service. This is a simple budgetary question. If all things were equal, of course, I would want to keep this in, in the city in-house, but they're not. This is about cost-saving to the resident, to the taxpayer. I can in good conscience support with, the city cannot even guarantee me, based off of our last presentation, that the numbers when we get to 2028, 2029, and 2030 are going to be that number. They could just as easily be higher than this. These are just guestimates here from the city staff. Correct me if I'm wrong, my folks from Rumkey, these numbers that I'm looking at, those are set in stone for five years. And if the city approves this and signs the contract, you can't change those numbers. Brian, can you guarantee that these numbers for the city are not going to change for five years?
No, I cannot, they could possibly go up more than that. That was the best-case scenario that I gave you.
So, one of the other things that I've heard is that, well, we sit here and we find ourselves here today because of poor management. Actually, we're here right now because of good management. I just told you, if we stay in-house for an additional year, it's actually cheaper for the city to provide these services. However, what the leadership and the management team of the city did is they forecasted out, and they looked to see where the costs are going to operate this system. And based off of those projections and the uncertainty that the city has in keeping this in-house, the prudent thing to do was to put this proposal in front of us and to ask us to make a decision. Poor management would have been waiting until we find ourselves in this situation to where the costs have doubled and tripled and then governing by crisis. I, I, I just think when this boils down to what the decision is in front of us, it's not if we want to keep the service in-house or out of service, it's how much are we willing to subject the residents of the city of Pickwa to pay on their utility bills? So, I don't have any more questions, and that's all.
So, I think we should ask the citizens what they want, whether it should be in-house or out of, out, or whether they're willing to pay more or not.
Right, because that's, the question is not, is it in-house or out of house? It's how much are you willing to pay to keep it? Because based off of these numbers, the costs are going up. So, are you, are you willing to pay an additional $168.96 to keep this in-house?
How many years down the road was that?
Five.
It gets worse after 10.
But these are city employees. They spend money within this town, Rumkey doesn't.
You'd have to come to the podium and talk, right? I hear what you're saying, but you gotta come to, you gotta sign the thing.
It is, yeah, it's, dude, you can't yell from, you can't yell from the audience, I'm asking you to be quiet, thank you.
We, we had already discussed that the city employees currently working for sanitation have jobs ready and waiting for them in other departments, they'll be easily transferred. So, no, no, no one's losing their job over this. And even if they were, no apologies for bluntness here, I cannot in good conscience tell 20,000 residents of Pickwa that your trash is now $100 more expensive per year as a welfare program to government employees. I cannot do that, I will not do that.
Number one, I think that residents should appreciate that commissioners have spent quite a bit of time trying to analyze the situation. It's not for some lack of listening or, or some lack of, of attention to the detail. The other observation is that we know that whatever happens, costs are gonna go up. The costs are gonna go up, the, the tipping fees are going up, we know that's gonna happen, that's a given. We know that, the other thing that I think we know is that if we vote in the affirmative to enter into a contract, Pickwa will probably never have sanitation services in Pickwa again. It's too expensive to try to initiate services after they've been taken away, and so that, that's an important consideration. And I would, I would offer that I have received numbers of calls and emails, and unfortunately, none of them have been positive for Rumkey. They've all been in favor of, of considering, continuing setting services even though there is an anticipated cost increase.
I'm in agreement with you. The first positive one that I got was tonight from the utility committee. All the rest of the ones that I've had said to keep services at the app. Go ahead.
So, one of our friends here in the ICS actually put together a, a couple of polls that put out on Facebook. Granted, they're not scientific, and not everybody uses Facebook, but the responses for these were hundreds of votes. One of them was, I forget, it was like almost 300 votes. And 91% of those people say, don't do this. In the comments, there was one lady, she said, we just moved into Pickwa from another town that had Rumkey, and Rumkey raised the prices double of what we were paying. We prefer the city services. Someone responded to her and said, I was a residential customer of Rumkey and left them due to them raising fees every three months. Started out at $66 a year, and a year later it was over 100. We have the documentation for five years, you know, we've got those in that, those numbers, those are written in stone. Those aren't gonna raise. What happens at the end of five years? And if we get to the point where we go, wait, no, we don't want to do this anymore, too late, we've already sold the trucks. We've already moved the people out to go do other things.
That is an interesting point about what happens at the end of five years. Mr. City Manager, I do believe that we, the RFP that was put out had an extension for an additional five years. Can you, I guess, explain a little bit about what the, what the possibility of a rate increase at that time might be?
So, the renewal at that point, we would look at the, at the, renewing the contract and what that price structure, fee structure would look like. And if we chose not to renew it, then we could go back out to bid, and there are several other vendors that I'm sure would be interested in looking at providing services.
Well, I mean, what would happen if we continued on with Rumkey after, after five years, if we continued to extend it? Wasn't there like a built-in extension?
It would be a 10-year, yeah, but we, negotiation of rate structure at that point.
Okay, is there any limits or guardrails on that, that it only raise up a certain percent?
I have to pull the contract provisions off.
Dude, does Rumkey, do the representatives from Rumkey, are you guys aware of if there's any limits or guardrails after that first five years?
We have pricing structure in there for 10, for 10 total years.
Okay.
Sorry, it's, it's 5% per year, is that correct, sir?
So, at most of 5% per year. I, I don't know exactly what the numbers were, what the percentages were for our, the city's maintaining its increase, but it sure seemed like it was more than 5% per year. Also, that would be a contracted, set-in-stone rate, whereas the city, we're, we're free to re-vote on the rates every single year. There's nothing really to stop us as in the next election cycle, but that would not stop the increase in cost for that department.
Let's hear from some citizens, Jeff Grimes.
Jeff Grimes, 1512 Margine Drive. So, would there be an opt-out option for the citizens since the city would not be providing these services? Okay, so, you're, Mr. DeGross, you were saying like $160 a year or a month? A year, so that, that at the end of five years is only gonna be, I don't have a calculator in my mouth, it's not good, but only $10, $11 more. So, I had the pleasure of talking to some of the guys that do work for the trash, and great group of guys, and the biggest concern was, this is probably the hardest job that is in the city. And the guys riding on the back of the truck are a temp service. So, one of the guys on the temp service has been there two years, and he was really discouraged that he would never be able to get a full-time job with the city. So, like you guys said, there was a big Facebook thing, and like 90% of the people in town want to stay with the city. You know, if it didn't work out, we just spent a bunch of money on all these trucks, a bunch of money on all these trucks, what will happen to the trucks? Gonna sell them, and what's gonna be the depreciation on how much money we're gonna lose on those? So, it's a, it's a big deal because- So, it's a, it's a big deal because, you know, nobody wants to pay that much more for trash, but I don't think like $10 more a month. I think the big issue is with the electric bills and stuff. So, if we continue to outsource stuff because it's costing the citizens money, why, how much would it cost us and what would the savings be since we don't have a jail or clerk in town to outsource the Pickla Police Department? And when, if we're just about saving money, I think they just spent $20,000 or $30,000 on a side-by-side so that we can patrol the bike path, because they said, "Well, there could be a bicycle that was abandoned." So, it's not, it's not about the city saving money. We have, we have a city manager that is making more money than actual governor for the state of Ohio. So, when you guys are talking about saving the citizens money, how can, how can a city manager be making more than the governor? What happens if Rumpke doesn't do an acceptable job? And then, as you, as you spoke, after five years, where are we at after five years? So, we're gonna have to buy all these new trucks again, or a 5% increase? I just think that, you know, you guys are here to provide a service for the citizens, and the citizens spoke on the Facebook page that they, they didn't want to farm down, so we'll see if you guys listen to us this time.
I'd be remiss if I didn't point out that the concern with Rumpke that was, I believe you even read out the comment, was that you guys might surprise, jump the rates, and the rates would go higher. And now I'm hearing that, well, paying the city extra money, that would be, that would be what's fine. So, I, you know, that, that does not make any, any logical sense there. And I will again point out that this is not a welfare program for, for city employees. Also, how blessed and privileged are you that you can afford an extra $10 per month? There's a lot of people on fixed income who have talked to me so that they can. So, that, that is, that is the problem here, is it is about price.
You guys raised the tax.
It was about price when the concern was that Rumpke was going to increase the price, but now it's not about price when the city would have to increase the price.
You have 30 seconds.
You guys didn't care when they raised the license plates $5 about the people?
When did that happen?
I don't know, you're the friggin' council member.
Probably before my time.
So, I'm just saying what the people want. So, you guys are supposed to listen.
Substantially different, your time is up. There's a difference between a license and a tax versus a, a utility bill for a service. There's a substantially different type of transaction here.
Now, your time is up, but thank you.
Commission for Point of Clarification, I did the math, and so if it is 5% per year in years five through 10, year six would be $168, so it's gonna be an escalating cost. And again, we're in a position where the city is having a very difficult time finding CDL drivers, so guaranteeing the service and having a prompt service is gonna become more difficult over time because we do not deal in the volume that Rumpke does. And whether it's Rumpke Waste Management, any of the, any of the services that do this, we're just simply priced out of the game as a small municipality. There's no municipalities around here left that are contemplating even spinning up their own, and to the contrary, the smaller localities that are in our insurance pool are getting away from doing this service. And it's not just the math, it's the safety that's involved. I shared with you some of the issues that we've had just recently with the safety concerns, and again, that's because we don't have full-time people doing that job. And if, if we do hire those people that are part-time or work through the temp service as full-time, and we go into year five, six, there's no guarantee what this cost is gonna be to keep up. So, it's either, you know, you have two choices. You can either go with a guaranteed five-year with a guaranteed 5% per year for the second five-year term, or if we go with the city, we are actually less in year one. And again, over time, there's no guarantee what that cost looks like, but not just the cost.
Right, technical, may I have a shout now?
Yeah, I think I have to shout.
So, Nick?
Go ahead.
Yeah. First of all, I did read the one comment, and it had to do with cost, but there were many others that also had to do with service. But, yeah, that would be, that would be the only thing.
And I'll speak to the service component, because I've done this in other communities where they didn't have refuse service, they became a city, and so they contracted the service out to start with. So, it's all about management, it's the relationship between the vendor and the city, and holding their feet to the fire to make sure they do what they're required to do. So, it's not something that's impossible to repeat. It's that the trash to recycle will get picked up every day, every week, at your curb, and it just, it's by who does it get picked up? And so, if the residents feel that it's important to have city staff do that, then they're gonna pay a premium to have that. But in doing so, we're gonna have to cut back. We're not going to be able to provide a lot of the services that we've been putting out there for the simple fact that we can't just keep increasing rates. I mean, for us to come back in three years and say we have to have double rate increase because we can't purchase trucks or find drivers, then we're gonna be criticized for mismanagement. I mean, it's, it's that simple. So, we're providing, it's either, yes, we wanna have a cost that's going to be stabilized for five years and potentially 10 years, and know what that is, or go into uncertain territory where you may all be off the commission, and the commission is sitting up there wondering why our rates have gone up and why do we have this city service that we can't afford? So, it, it's pretty basic.
Darren Yanks.
Darren Yanks, 604 West Green Street. Six months ago, or whenever we first started talking about this, I'll admit, I was against it very much. Knowing that the employees, the five full-time employees will stay with the city, that's one concern that I had, and you already took care of that, seems like. My only really big concern with switching is, it has nothing to do with Rumpke or anybody else that would be doing the service, is making sure that when the assets are sold off, the trucks and anything else, and then the fund balance, that money is really thought over as to where to put it. That's my main concern on that. Having said that, I think whether it comes out to be even, or it's cheaper, or it ends up being a little bit more expensive, Rumpke and stuff, they're already doing, and don't take this the wrong way, City of Pickla, but there's a lot of times, City of Pickla does not pick up the big items, even when the couches are wrapped up in plastic and stuff. In my neighborhood and stuff, every time I drive through every day and stuff, a lot of times, I will see it out, like two or three items in the neighborhood, just within a block or two, and nobody really picks them up. And it's kind of uncertain as to what you can really set out with the City of Pickla, always has been to a certain point. So, I mean, with them being able to take at least three big items, and all you gotta do is call them and let them know 24 hours in advance and stuff, I think that's a big plus as far as cleaning up the city. Because when people have access to be able to actually set the stuff out, even though if it's the same cost or more cost, when you're able to set it out and clean the property up, it makes the city look better. And I think ever since the city even did away with the spring pickup and stuff, I think I could see different areas and stuff of the city not looking as good as it used to, because everybody would take pride, would take time and hurry, clean stuff up, throw it out there on the street, and the city picked it up. I know that's unreasonable to do that all the time. But as far as Rumpke, I have their service up at Jackson Center at my hardware store. My rates haven't gone up, they do a fantastic job. I can't complain about them. As far as if there is a cost increase later on, if people actually go to the dump and be dropping stuff off, and the amount of time that you take running over there, dropping it off, I mean, clean out rental properties and stuff, you know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of cost to that and stuff. So, I mean, it's not cheap to get rid of all the trash on that, and not to mention all the employees that you're dealing with. So, I see where the city's having an issue as far as, you know, the cost of getting rid of everything once you collect it. The only other thing I really would like to ask about would be with Rumpke, would we actually be able to, properties with multiple units, would we actually be able, if there's room, to be able to put in like a small dumpster instead of doing all the cans? Because actually, that would make the property look better, and, you know, I mean, whether it's yard stuff or whatever, you can throw it in the dumpster, gets picked up every week or every other week, however they would set it up.
Brian, is that an option?
That would be, that would be a code issue that we would have to deal with. That's not an option that we're allowed to, to give right now at this point.
Is that a code issue that you'd be considered to, you'd be willing to consider? I mean, if there's room, if there's parking out back, or you can put a dumpster where it's not showing?
Yeah, we'd have to go through planning and zoning, go through the plan commission.
So, you'd have to do that for each property?
I would be in order in some specific to cover all of the, the properties.
But this, this is actually pickup for small businesses and residential, right? Like, small businesses along Main Street, like you come along the back alley, and there's all the cans sitting out there now, you're gonna be using the same pickup, right?
Right, yeah, there, there are some small businesses that we, that we pick up for down there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there are quite a few, actually. But, I mean, if you're, if Rumpke is doing it and they have the dumpsters, I'm talking about like this, their smaller dumpster that they have, would you not consider, you know, I mean, what would be the difference if you got six cans lined up for that business because they have so much trash, or you got one small dumpster? It actually looks nicer with one small dumpster.
We, we would have to determine what, exactly where would that dumpsters, where would that dumpster sit? That all the business, enough business owners could access it easily to, to get to rent these two, we'd have to look at that.
Also, Darren, to answer your question about in a residential setting, if you have more than two units in a building, you can opt into your own collection. This is residential service.
I'm not asking about that part. Except, I'm asking, instead of having so many cans, like I know where there's an eight-unit, and the, the property looks like crap.
Right, so the eight units could do their own service.
Basically, eight, 16 cans lined up there, you know, I mean, it looks beautiful.
Your time's up, Aaron. Thank you.
Yeah, so a multi-unit apartment building or, or home that's, you know, has eight units should probably be on a commercial account with a, a private hauler. Sometimes we, when we notice that, that one, one property has 16 cans or something like that, we opt them into a private situation. They, they shouldn't probably be on this program.
Nicholas Smart.
Nicholas Smart, 1433 Covington Avenue. Now, it was mentioned that there's some challenging directions the City of Pickla Employee Sanitation Department is going through. Are those certification challenges, employee relation challenges, managerial issues? Wonder if you can elaborate on that?
Some of it, some of it's a part-time help. That is a revolving door with part-time staff. When you're using a part-time staffing service, you know, to alleviate that issue, we, we would look at hiring, you know, full-time employees for the back. In doing that, you know, it's a cost increase to the citizens to do that. Two, hiring full-time drivers has been extremely difficult. Our last round of applicants, we had seven applications. Out of those applicants, we had four people that told us they were gonna come in for an interview. Three people did not show up even though they told us they were gonna show up for an interview. The fourth person did show up. Fortunately, they were a great candidate, and we were able to hire that person, but...
So, and they all need to be CDL, CDL licensed, too?
They all have to.
Would that licensing be something that would have to be done through City of Pickla or not so much?
We, we don't offer that training, it would have to be through...
Not at the, not at the sanitation department? Okay. Did I interrupt you?
No.
Okay. Will Rumpke be able to handle certain waste that the City of Pickla is not able to, has the capacity, certifications, training to do so, such as industrial heavy materials that are byproducts of industrial heavy manufacturing? One, two, three. Only got two minutes.
Could you repeat that again?
Okay. Will Rumpke be able to handle certain waste that the City of Pickla is not able to, has the capacity to, certifications, training to do so, such as industrial heavy materials that are byproducts of industrial heavy manufacturing?
After you are done with your time, I will invite Rumpke back up to discuss their hazmat procedures.
And do we have an opt-out program? Let's say we go with Rumpke, and, I mean, is there a satisfaction, you know, can we go with them for a certain amount of time, and then we have the ability to opt out?
No, this will be a five-year contract.
Five-year contract, final, okay. That's my time. That's all.
Thank you. I'd invite Rumpke representatives to come back up, and I guess the question would be, are, what is allowed to be picked up using the hazmat material classifications? Is that substantially different than what we probably already have?
Probably not. Policies and procedures are very similar in Miami County. Miami County is a flow-control county where all trash has to go to the Miami County Transfer Station, with the exception of industrial special waste or profile non-hazardous waste, which we have the capabilities for, but from a residential contract side, that should never be in your trash toter. That's usually at an industrial facility business with roll-off containers that go directly to landfills.
So, so really, the, the, I guess, the overriding constraint on what you can collect is the Miami Transfer Station, right?
Correct.
And, and we're currently already using that, so...
Yes, it would be what the transfer station policies and procedures are with the addition of their end user, which is the Cherokee Run landfill in Bell Fountain. So, that's where all the trash from Miami County goes to from the transfer station. So, they have the ultimate final decision on what can and cannot be accepted at the transfer station.
So, so the, the constriction on the types of materials you can collect is gonna be the exact same now as was dictated by Miami County? And then, I guess, the other question was essentially talking about commercial services for industries, which I'm sure you guys offer, but that's outside the scope of what this is, correct?
That's outside the scope of this contract. That would be working direct. I'm also the commercial sales rep as well, so...
So, if somebody wanted to talk about their heavy industrial waste, I should give you a call?
Absolutely, right, sir. Yeah, well, I mean, we have a number of commercial customers inside the city limits currently right now that we're serving. Some of them even downtown with dumpsters. So, yeah, that's definitely something we can provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kim Heisler.
Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway. A couple of things right off the bat. Civic Plus Software stinks. You guys should probably put it on YouTube and stuff like that because the audio and the video, you know, having problems again. That's not what we're talking about.
Yeah, exactly.
Commissioner, that was the system, it wasn't the software.
Okay, it doesn't matter. It's still a problem. All right, so, you know, I'm not, I'm not excited about outsourcing. I understand the money thing. I don't think the amount of money difference over a period of a year is that bad. I do understand that there are issues. Always keeping the services inside to help keep us self-sustained is always better, too. And again, I, I don't wanna, would not wanna be in you guys' shoes at all, because, you know, we want the best for the city. And I did have a question. Has Rumpke ever serviced Pickla before, and how long at what capacity? Try to make it as quick as possible, because I got lots of questions.
Not, not for reviews. They did at one time manage the recycling.
How long did?
And how did that go?
I, I wasn't in charge at the time, I'm sorry.
Very quickly, how, how did it go?
Yeah, we, we utilized Rumpke for our recycling service for probably about 20, 25 years, and it was high...
And you got rid, and you got rid of it because why?
We moved in-house because we had more staff than what we had work for, so we, we took that service and, and those employees and had them do the recycling as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, gosh, there's so many questions here. Okay, so, how long ago did we buy the truck? You know, the big old arm truck? It's only been like two, three years that we got the new truck? I guess what my question is, you don't have to answer that. It's not been that long ago. So, my question of looking ahead and foresight of seeing problems seems to be a little bit of a, an issue here. I would've thought three years out, or two years out when we got it, that we could've maybe seen this ahead of time. Um, earlier, it was mentioned July is when it was, July is when you guys just realized. That's only six months ago, in actually, you know, looking forward. So, that, we, we need to have a lot more foresight when we make decisions on spending money, 'cause it's, um, we just need to have more foresight. Um, something else that was mentioned earlier, um, Mr. Oberdorfer had mentioned, you know, what, what happens at the end of five years, or if they're not doing their job? He mentioned holding their feet to the fire. Okay. Who's gonna do that? Because that didn't happen out at the old water plant where the batteries were. And that was only one place to look at. Um, and this, you know, it's, that's the whole city. So, that's kinda questionable. And it seems like we're reducing source, resources or services and outsourcing and removing a lot of different things, is maybe downsizing groups and stuff, yet the pay for the, the folks working for the city and individuals are still getting increases. So, that is a little bit concerning as well. I don't know, you mentioned something about disaster management. That's probably common terms, but that's a little bit concerning, too. I think we already talked about what the second five years look like. And what happens? And you can answer this afterwards. What happens if, for some reason, something comes up and the city wants out of the contract within that five years? And then, also, like, Paul, you had mentioned, like, the extra bags, the, the grass bags and stuff like that, and they said, "Oh, we'll just put it out there." Is, afterwards, is there an extra cost for each bag we sit out there to put in there? I mean, from what I read, it sounded like each bag is another five dollars, something like that.
No.
No, there is not an additional cost.
So, we could have four bags sitting out with our trash, and it wouldn't be an additional cost with Rumke?
Yard waste.
Yard waste.
In, in the bag, in the bags. Okay, good. And then, also, recycling, is recycling taken to a different place, or is it all separated but dumped in the same municipal...
I asked that question.
Did you? I'm sorry, I missed it.
They, they said that they take it to their own recycling place?
Okay. Thank you, I missed that. We're talking about so much stuff.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to respond to the comment that the, the price raise would not be that bad when looking at the, uh, you know, keeping it with Pickwa. And I'll just, again, how blessed and privileged you are that that would not affect you. I don't know that a tax of ten bucks per month would affect me either, but I am also blessed and privileged to be able to absorb that in a way that someone on fixed income cannot. Um, I'm quite baffled by the sudden stream of comments that, "Oh, it's no big deal to pay more for city utilities," because I have quite, heard quite different comments over the last year of being on the commission, where people have said, "I want my utility rates lower, it's too much." Any kind of fee change or anything is, is, uh, throwing off people on fixed income. Um, we have done a great job with some of our other utilities and trying to map out, keeping them as level as possible. That's not gonna work out with sanitation. But I, I, I just, it, it is so baffling to me that we are suddenly getting a stream of people saying, "I would much rather pay a lot more money for, for the, these utilities." It, it is just in such a contradiction from what we normally hear, and from what I have heard from a lot of citizens.
Mr. May, write a call for the question. I need a motion? So moved. I need a second. Second. Moved and seconded. Let me have a roll call, please. Are we talking about, just about, the calling for the question?
We're not voting on it yet.
This is just to vote. Yeah.
Commissioner Holman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Vetter?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
I need a motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution R-11-Q5.
Second. Moved and seconded. I don't need a roll call on this.
Commissioner Holman?
Aye.
Commissioner DeBrass?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
No.
Commissioner Vetter?
No.
Commissioner Simmons?
Next on our agenda. Um, Resolution Number R-12-25.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Arm Truck Corp. LLC for the purchase of a new 2024 tandem dump truck with plow and salt equipment.
Yes, the Public Works and Utility Departments would like to purchase a new 2024 tandem dump truck with plow and salt equipment from ARN Truck Corp. This truck was competitively bid through the Sourcewell contract. Uh, the cost for the truck will be split between the Public Works 101 budget and Utility Budgets 403 and 404. The Public Works will pay for the ca, the additional cost of the plow and salt equipment to outfit the truck. The total cost for this truck will be $289,784,000, and was approved in the 2025 budget. This truck came in under budget, and we budgeted $315,000 for the budget. The tandem dump truck is already built and can be delivered to the City of Pickwa within two, one to two weeks after ARN Truck Corp. will receive an approved purchase order. And this truck will have an extended warranty with it, a seven-year, 200,000-mile base vehicle, a six-year, uh, 200,000-mile engine warranty, a six-year, 200,000-mile transmission warranty, and a five-year equipment warranty covering the truck bed, plow, and salt equipment. Um, the expenditure coming out of the Street 101 Fund will be $155,384.50. Coming out of the 403 Water Fund will be $67,200, $67,217.75. And coming out of the 404 wastewater budget will be $67,217.75.
Any questions from Commissioner? Why'd we go with Arm Truck Corp., I guess? That's a, it's a great, it's under budget, I like that.
Uh, they're, they're on the Sourcewell contract for this truck.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you said that. You did say... Any other questions from Commissioners? Kim Heisler? No questions.
We'll get this in time for the next snowstorm, right?
I hope so. I hope we're done with the snow.
Well, uses can it have in the pickup bulk, uh...
Yes, we, we could use it to pick up bulk items. We would use it for, uh, if we had a, we had, say, if we had a storm or a natural disaster, and that will happen at some point, we would use it for storm cleanup as well.
No other, there were no other questions from therea? Um, and Kim Devine, so, I will ask for a motion.
I would move that we approve Resolution R-12-25.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is R-13-25.
A resolution to recommend the major subdivision with dedication of 9801 State Route 66, parcel ID number N44250148.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commission. Uh, the case before you, Resolution R-13-25, uh, is before you because our Development Code requires that all major subdivisions that have, uh, right-of-way dedication or easements on them, uh, go before the Planning Commission and before City Commission. Uh, so the, uh, request before you is a subdivision of 5.079 acres from the current city's water treatment plant property, uh, which is 42.14 acres in total. Uh, the proposal, uh, includes dedication of access easements, um, which is why, again, it is before you. Uh, it's not just, uh, a lot split. Uh, with that, uh, the five acres, uh, is being submitted by AES Ohio. Uh, they, uh, had worked with the Pickwa Power to, uh, for, for a number of years, working on redundancy to make sure that our power, uh, within, uh, the City of Pickwa is, uh, continues to be, the system itself continues to be upgraded. Uh, so, they, along with AMP T, uh, who is the other party that works with Pickwa Power, um, are working on ways to create a substation, uh, to create that redundancy that, uh, allows for more resiliency on our grid, um, on the north side of our community. So, uh, the eve, this evening, the request is not for any of those other things. The request is just to split the 5.079 acres, uh, in the future. If that 5.079 acres were to be sold, uh, which, again, we're saying it likely will, that will again come back before City Commission for their approval on the sale of that lot to any end user. Uh, and I will also note, uh, as there was substantial discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, uh, that whatever is built upon that 5.079-acre tract will also be required to go, uh, and receive any permits, appropriate permits, through all agencies that require those permits prior to any construction on that 5.079-acre property. So, again, the case before you this evening is to recommend a major subdivision, uh, which, a major subdivision is just a term used in our Development Code to split that 5.079-acre tract from the 42.14 acres of our water treatment plant. And our Planning Commission did recommend in a four-to-zero vote in favor of the resolution that you see before you. Is there any questions that I can answer? I'd be happy to do so.
Any questions from the Commission?
So, this goes back to, this is gonna be heavy industrial, and, again, there's anything that we might, given our past, consider a tour, would have to come back to the Planning Commission and then to us for a special use permit, correct?
Correct. That's even beyond the fact that we will be selling, if we sell that property. We, we own that property, so we will be making the determination of who we are interested in selling it to. And, again, that will come before City Commission, uh, to adopt the sale of that property as well.
Good job. Any other Commissioner?
Hello, Kim Heisler, 1802 West Parkway Drive. Um, I have a question, and it's the same one that I had in the, the Planning, uh, Commission. Actually, there's a couple of things. Being this is a, a major subdivision, um, and I, I don't know if this has to do with zoning. Is this where the folks were notified around there that, that that land was gonna be sold, or it was gonna be...
As part of our notification process, yes. Everyone within the distance were, were notified, correct?
Okay, were they notified that the cul-de-sac is actually gonna be where, how, whoever's gonna own that or use that was where they're gonna become ungoing?
Our notification process notifies people of a meeting, so, uh, they notify them that the Planning Commission heard the case on the evening that they heard the case. The, the details of, of, of which you speak are, are much more detailed than what that notice would've noted.
Okay, so they, they would, they potentially be, could be totally, um, have no idea, but, okay. So, the other thing is, um, it was mentioned in the, in the Planning Committee, Committee?
Commission?
That's it, yep. That the high-impact industrial standards, and I, I think you explained this, but I'd like for you to explain this again. In the standards in our codes, uh, it says, for the high-impact industrial, um, this, the facility that involves manufacturing, storage, or whatever, which, like, that's zoning. Well, that's okay. This is not zoning, but this says the standard is a minimum lot of 10 acres, and you guys are recommending five. So, can you explain to me how, by going by our guidelines, that we're allowed to change it to five acres when it's in writing here and says 10 as the minimum amount? That's...
Do you want me to address that?
Sure. That's my, uh, I think that's, that's my only question.
Certainly. So, I mean, obviously, it also says at the discretion of the, the city. And, and I will note, this is also an essential service. There will be additional approvals as part of the, um, zoning permit, if that is moved forward. Um, it will be a buildable lot in that sense. You are correct. It is less than that 10 acres. That, that, again, does not mean that you cannot approve a split less than 10 acres, but it does have to get approved explicitly, which, again, is what the Planning Commission did. And which is what is being recommended, again, this evening. Now, again, that goes through that process to make it abundantly clear that 5.079 acres is being split. I will note, that's what that, there's two portions, the major subdivision portion and the, the split. Um, if this split did not include any of those other items, it would not require Planning Commission or City Commission approval. Uh, that could be done by our staff, by our city planner, without public notification and, and approval.
All right, thank you.
Jeff Grimes, 1512 Moregene Drive. Um, so here we go again. The, I don't, I don't even understand what's going on in our town. We're gonna allow now by our new water treatment plant, which is by our old water treatment plant, the manufacturing or storage of dangerous, noxious, or offensive materials, smoke, odor, noise, clair, fumes, gas, vibration, fire, or explosion, risk, emission particles, radiation, or other disruptive factors. There is no amount of money that is worth the risk to put any type of an industrial subdivision, whatever you wanna call it, in this area. It says that the proposed zoning is consistent with the area's industrial character and does not adversely impact adjacent properties. So, there is nothing out there besides houses, the Johnson Farm, Swift Run, farmland. And so now, we're going to rezone. This is also in our source water-protected area. The gentleman that lived at Tecumseh Circle said that since the water plant he's gonna put out there, he has an excessive amount of water runoff. Where do you think this water's gonna go? It's gonna go into Swift Run, it's gonna go into the Miami River. Any of the stuff that happens, um, emissions of particulate matter, radiation, or smoke, or odor, or noise, is gonna come into Pickwa. That wind, 90% of the time, comes out of the west. That brings all of this stuff into our source water protection area and our town. Why, why can't you do a substation someplace else? There's, what are you gonna, what are we gonna do out there? It's houses and the new water plant. There is no other industry out there except for Hampshire cabinetry. And, and I'm not even sure if that's in the city or county. But why do you guys wanna keep putting this stuff in our natural... You said, I, I just don't understand why you guys would ever even think about putting anything like this at our new water plant, let alone what happened at our own old water plant. So, please, do not allow this to be rezoned, 'cause then the doors open again, and who is gonna be watching what's going on? is going to be watching what's going on out there?
Mr. Henkelman, is resolution R-13-25 pertaining to heavy industry, or is it talking about residential subdivisions?
It's not dealing with the zoning of the property. It is subdividing the 5.079 acre property from the existing 42.1 acre property.
Okay. But it's not just zoning heavy industry?
Correct. There is no zoning being requested under this resolution.
There are no other public comment questions? Any other questions from, there are no other public comment, oh, Nicholas Mark, I forgot. Thank you, Nicholas.
And you left your cell phone up here.
Yeah.
Unless you need it for notes next time.
Just bring it back.
I will. Nicholas Mark, 1433 Covington Avenue. The Senate, I noted, I noted this earlier, and I don't know if this has to do with this resolution to recommend the major subdivision with dedication 901, state route 66, but there is a certain citizen nearby, and he had grievances about this property in relation to zoning issues. So I don't know if this is a specific topic, it is covering that, because I know this does deal with zoning. I know, I'm running low. And is this going to require a clearing of a whole swath of land?
I can't answer that, obviously. When they come forward to cite a project, you would know the answer to that. As of now, the request is to split the five acres and potentially sell that property. The final use of it, again, will depend on where that project sits and how, and to your point, to the planning commission conversation, I will note, that conversation dealt with elements that potentially could impact the neighbors, like light and screening, and all of those issues, again, would be resolved once an application came forward for a plan for what would be done on that five acres. As of now, this request is for the five acres to be created from the 42 acres.
Okay. And this, this is located outside the perimeter of the water treatment plant, like outside the gates. Is it not within the gates? This is outside the gates? This is coming from, what is it, Hetzler Road out there? Not Hetzler, is it, what's that road out there?
Harden.
Harden, Harden Road? So Harden Road, crossing Johnson's Farm, you got the inlet, which I don't know what that word, or what that road used to be called, but that's blocked off now. So in this plot, that would be opened up, and that subdivision would be made somewhere back in that wooded area. Correct.
It's on the north side of the parcel, on the north side of Harden Road cul-de-sac, which used to be the Harden Road alter. Yes.
So you said that the citizens nearby were given, basically, what is, I don't know, referred to as a blanket letter, that is to make, to let them know that this issue will be discussed at the, either the planning commission or the, tonight at this commission I just want to reiterate that there's a lot of people that might not be able to come to these meetings. I don't know, maybe due to their age, their health, unawareness, you know, there's a number, myriad of things. And it's, it's, I know, Kyle, you said there's things that got to be approved before we move forward, but I'm kind of synergistically relating this to what happened with, I know this isn't this topic, but I'm just saying battery burns. That whole, that whole issue started at a planning commission. We had that issue, this last issue tabled at the last planning commission. So we're trying to, like, watch our Ps and Qs here, because we don't want battery burn 2.0. All those resonances out there, all those residents that live out in that area, they might not know what's coming their way. They might know that, they might not know this substation with this, like this hum that's, all these deer used to come around my house, and now they're not coming around. We used to see eagles out here. I mean, they could use heavy machinery came through and tore up all these woods and just complain after complaint after complaint. And then, before you know it, you got Fox 45, ABC 22, CBS Channel 7 saying, what the heck? What the heck's going on in Pickwa, Ohio? How come they cannot keep it together? You know? What's going on in Pickwa, Ohio? So I'm just, maybe I'm asking for a tabling of this issue.
Nick, your time is up.
Kyle, what's the current zoning of that parcel?
Well, that is one of the planning commission conversations that are still occurring. It is very similar. It is actually zoned industrial. It is not zoned 2023 industrial. And so we are trying to interpret what that looks like, because it does not, it's kind of like the wine insight. When we, when our zoning code in 2023 was adopted with the development code, there were some parcels that were intended to continue the designations, and for whatever reason, our map does not reflect. So the water plant property, which includes this, is zoned IH. So we, I will tell you, I believe, until we're 100% clear on our interpretation, we believe this is already zoned IH, but that is, I think, up for interpretation, which the planning commission and our legal counsel, we're going to work through those items prior to the next planning commission meeting.
Gotcha. But we're not turning something that's not industry into suddenly becoming industry. It's already?
No, it's currently, yeah, correct. And again, the water plant is in the IH zoning district because that is where the essential service lives.
Was the old IH designation, is that substantially similar to the new heavy industrial designation?
I don't know that I can answer. All the uses are the same, but it was industrial use.
What, was it the heaviest use of industry back when that was the code?
I don't know the answer to that. If there was a heavier one, I'm not aware, but there certainly could have been.
Can you answer this, are we able to approve this since it's a recommend, recommend a major subdivision with dedication as opposed to without the designation of IH?
Yeah, you're not, that's not before you this evening. So this evening, it is a lot split explicitly. And, again, I will note that if this property, then, once it's split, will be owned by the city of Pickwa, and if we decide at that point in time that we want to sell it to someone, that will come back before you to approve that sale. And then, once that sale occurs, if it does, then the permit process will occur for whatever happens on the property to meet all of our code regulations.
Okay. But, again, just to clarify for everyone, this is not suddenly turning this into new heavy industry. We're not even changing the zoning at all. We're just cutting apart a piece of an existing property. Now, I believe the next resolution is a rezone to heavy industry, but this one is not a rezone to heavy industry. It's just cutting apart an existing industrial zone.
Correct. Our water plant, 42 acres, is being split by five acres.
I will call for a motion.
May I move that we adopt resolution R-14-25?
That's 13, isn't it?
1325. Yes, I made the same mistake.
I second that motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of resolution number R-13-25, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-14-25.
A resolution authorizing a zoning map amendment to the city of Pickwa zoning map to designate parcel number C06032810 to IH Industrial Heavy.
Good evening. Resolution R-1425 is a zoning designation of a property that will come before you in the future. So the challenge that we have with timing some of these, this is an annexation that currently has been approved, and it is coming, it will come before the city commission for your formal approval. It has been approved through the other portions of that annexation process. The final formal approval through city commission will occur if you so choose to approve it. That will be in two weeks, so February, no, it will not be on the 4th, it will be on the 18th, February 18th, you will see that annexation. But the annexation request is for 38.66 acres on the south side of the city. This is the property that is owned by Brunns. They are requesting to annex that property into the city of Pickwa, and as such, we are obligated to provide a zoning designation to that property. So this is preemptively zoning that the IH Industrial Heavy District, which, again, is similar to all of the other properties on the south side of town. This property is actually south of Farrington and is just to the west of I-75, up against the highway.
The zoning, the planning commission's already approved it?
Correct. The zoning commission, or, excuse me, the planning commission recommended five to zero in favor of this at their meeting earlier this month. Are there any questions about this designation? I'd be happy to answer them.
Nicholas Mark? And Kim? I'll ask for a motion.
May I move that we adopt resolution R-14-25?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-15-25.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Ohio Cat to purchase a new 2024 420XE BACCO for the street department, power department, and utility department.
Yes, the public works department, power department, and utility departments are requesting to purchase a new 2024 BACCO from Ohio Cat. This was approved in the 2025 budget. This BACCO is competitively bid through the Sourcewell contract. We will be selling on gut deals two of our older BACOs and then maintaining two BACOs instead of three BACOs throughout our city departments moving forward. Funds from the sale of the two older BACOs will be placed back into the utility and power funds who originally purchased those units. This BACCO will have a seven-year extended warranty covering all parts and labor repairs on the piece of equipment. The total purchase price for this BACCO is $167,584.11. This did come in under budget. We had budgeted $200,000 for this new BACCO. The cost for the BACCO will be split between our departments, as indicated below. The Street 101 Fund will pay $51,896.03. The Power Department will pay $31,896.03. The Water 403 Account will pay $41,896.03. And then the wastewater 404 Budget will pay $41,896.02.
How much do you expect it to get possibly from the sale of the both the older BACOs?
Looking at the, at the current prices on the BACOs, I would, I would see anywhere around 30, 30,000 or plus. That'll go back into those two funds.
What was, what was the consideration in getting a newer one rather than a used one?
When you pick up a used piece of equipment, you're not getting any kind of warranty. Sometimes you end up with somebody else's problem when you look at a used piece of equipment.
So maybe the money that would have been saved goes back into maintenance over the lifetime?
Yes.
What's the life expectancy?
We would look, we're looking at replacing our BACOs, our heavier equipment, we want to try to keep around, hopefully keep for about 12 years. It goes a little outside of what the warranty is, but as long as it's feasible, we're not having major issues where it's costing taxpayers more to, for the repairs than just to go ahead and move forward with selling the older piece of equipment, purchasing something newer, where we don't have to incur any costs like for this piece of equipment for the next seven years.
Was, were there, what was the consideration for utilization? We're selling two of them, we're buying back one of them, so it sounds like maybe we had too many of them.
So we discussed between the department heads, we looked at, we've looked at all of our equipment, what we have, how often we use that equipment, and based on hours and needs with all the departments, we decided amongst ourselves it would be better, better for ourselves, better for the community, if we just continued going forward, maintaining two instead of three.
Kim?
I'm not against you guys, I'm really not. I really want a city that's looking out. And just based on earlier and having the foresight, hopefully, in the future, we're not going to want to have somebody else do our streets or outsource, like, snow plowing and stuff like that. I mean, that's it. I mean, it's okay to spend money on the stuff that we need, but let's not, like, in two years, outsource.
Nicholas Mark? And Lee? Any other comment from commissioners? I'll entertain a motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-16-25.
A resolution awarding a contract to Polcat Incorporated for the removal and disposal of lime residual from the city of Pickwa Water Plant Lime Lagoon.
Last one of the night, Commissioner. 2023.
It's not.
It's not.
For you.
It might got added, though, I'm sorry. Take that back.
Nice try. Thanks, Kevin.
Get your hopes up. Two years ago, we went out to bid on our lime sludge removal. We do this every three to six years, going back for, since we've had to get rid of lime sludge. This, this, so that approval took place in 2023 for a contract that will take us through 2028. This is just for the approval for this year of using $350,000 of water funds to facilitate the sludge removal for this year. And the reason we're here is anything over $75,000, we come to hear approval. Nothing new with this, what we've done in the past.
Every three years, you said?
Well, this last contract, we did extend it out a little longer, but, yeah, this one will go through 28, I believe. Is there any value to that lime material in terms of farm production or other? That's where it's going. It's going to farmers. So Polcat, they haul it in a kind of a liquid slurry in their tanker trucks, taking out the farm fields once the crops have been taken off, and, or before the crops have been put on, and it really raises the pH of the crop land. Yes, it is beneficial reuse. Any more questions?
Any other questions from commissioners? Nicholas Mark? I'll entertain a motion.
May I move that we adopt resolution R-16-25?
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And the last bit of new business for the night, resolution number R-17-25.
A resolution regarding the applied for liquor permit for Red Lobster Hospitality LLC doing business as Red Lobster Number 706, located at 991 East Ash Street, Pickwa, Ohio 45356.
This is a typical request when someone applies for a liquor license to the city of Ohio. First, it's circulated to staff to review, and then it's brought forward to commission. Commission approval?
You talking about?
I. Commission approval?
I'm not hearing you.
How about now?
Yeah.
Do you want to start over?
Keep going.
Okay. Commissioner?
Commission approval does not necessarily approve the liquor permit, but it looks to say no whether or not the city has any objections.
Do we?
Is there any issue with legal or police?
No.
What is this? I mean, I get that it says Red Lobster Hospitality LLC, but is this, I'm assuming the Red Lobster restaurant that is?
Yes.
Do they not have a liquor permit?
I believe it's for renewal.
Oh. Probably says on here.
Sorry.
Wonder if you can get some cheddar biscuit.
Yeah, or.
Thank you, that's all I had.
I got a kid that went to get chicken or steak at Red Lobster, which makes sense.
You get the nuggets and french fries?
Yeah, no, nothing. Nicholas Mark? I, I need a motion from the commission.
Mayor, I would, motion that we adopt resolution R dash one seven dash two five.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that concludes new business. Any comments from city manager?
I have none this evening, thank you.
Okay. Next is commissioners' comments. We will start with Commissioner DeBros.
In, the only comments that I was planning on saving for this was, was regarding the, I believe, the fourth item on our agenda, which, instead of asking questions, I use that time to make my comments. So with that being said, I will congratulate the mayor on his beloved Philadelphia Eagles heading back to the Super Bowl.
Thank you very much. I will bring it up.
I will not congratulate him or Commissioner Simmons for their beloved Ohio State Buckeyes knocking off my beloved Nederbund.
Oh, you're a D A fan?
And the national championship. However, if, if there were two teams to play for, I'm glad it were those two.
They're the best two teams, you're right.
But anyway, with that anecdotal side note there, I'll yield back my time there.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Vetter?
I will yield because of the likeness of the evening.
Okay. Commissioner Holman?
I would like to thank and recognize a city employee that recently retired, Mr. Jim Verholtz. He has given many, many years of very dedicated service to the city in maintaining the plaza building. He has done a great job and took a lot of pride in his work, and worked very hard on that building, and, and we thank him for his service. Also, tomorrow is his birthday, so happy birthday, Mr. Jim Verholtz.
Thank you.
And that is, that is all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Simmons?
And so I apologize, first of all, for any disruption I might have caused. Remember a year ago, I said when I got sworn in, I get my braids?
My hair.
So that's why I'm wearing sunglasses, it's not because I'm afraid of being famous. Thank you, Miss Stacy, for going out and getting my sunglasses. If you, that, you guys were going to leave me out and drive me home. All those people can go away, there we go. But that being said, very quietly, O H.
I know.
There you go. And last item, I can't remember if it was today or yesterday, I think it was yesterday, happy birthday here. Was it yesterday?
Hey, happy birthday.
Was it yesterday or today? Yesterday.
Yesterday, alright. Thirty, no?
Yeah.
Looks good, looks good. No gray, I see, that's, well, just a little. Alright, that's it?
That's it.
Alrighty, thank you. Hey, I want to start my comments by thanking the street department employees and city employees who braved that cold weather and kept our roadways clear, and being able to, and other citizens able to drive on the roadways, the street department. It was freezing, literally, and they were out there, and they did a good job, and I appreciate the job they did. I too, and, and Ohio State fan through and through, the best two teams were in the national championship. I was very happy Ohio State won, and I was glad to see Notre Dame put up a heck of a fight, and they were coming back, but there's only sixty minutes in the game, so. And yes, my Eagles are going back to the Super Bowl. It'll be four times since the year two thousand that they've been in the Super Bowl, I'm very, very pleased about that. If you haven't seen a Pickwa basketball game, please go out and watch one, it's getting near the end of the season, because February gets there, you know it's about tournament time, so get out there. Or if you haven't seen a Lehman Catholic basketball game, go watch them, they've only had one loss so far this season, one. So they're tearing it up pretty good, and my son's on the team, so. With that said, I will take a motion to adjourn, and then we will start non-agenda public comment right after.
Mayor, I motion that we adjourn.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Yep, take, take a minute.
I have a question. I'll look here for a shed, to approve that shit.
Alright, I don't know if this is the, the place to get approved for a shed, did you?